If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Hold on a second.
Motion and second to approve the agenda. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
ESAC County Schools empower all students to become productive, responsible citizens of an ever-changing global society. Uh, we'll take a minute now for public input on non-agenda items. Okay, we will then move on to the board's secretary.
I don't have much to report this month. Um, you might have noticed a big drop in the fund balances uh between June and July. Mainly the student debt fund and capital projects fund that is mostly due to um the loan being paid in June and July and then the playgrounds. So the fundraising for the playgrounds was pretty big, so I thought it would be decent.
Alright, do you have what you want to discuss?
No.
Alright, so then we will move on to administrative reports. Is that clear, Mr. Kennedy?
Sure, um, so I had my just um one paper there about um just grateful for the job that the students took on this summer. Um, all that they had went on at the elementary and then the building really looks good. Um, we're talking, the playground was awesome, so and Teresa Phillips telling me and I think the other staff that they had teaching there. And um and then I just referenced Julie Clayton and her work first, and um the kids are gonna love it right now. Um, so just excited about that. Um, summer PD, just did a little, we had um over twenty teachers attend various training sessions. And I just kind of did a quick estimate and it was over a thousand hours. And when I provided that out, I was like, okay, like eighty hours in a day. I'm twenty-five days of learning. Um, and it made me really big, oh my god. Yeah, I was like, um. But everybody that I talked to, the experiences were quality. Um, our teachers were excited and ready to apply the learning. So I gave some examples there. Um, so just been really good opportunities for teachers and and they were thankful for the opportunity too. Um, a little bit about onboarding, um, so you can see there at the elementary just our work and we survey our teachers and um they're re- they're recording, feeling more confident at the beginning of the year, and they did like how the training was kind of spread out so that it's not just a big old, you know, created everything. So um we'll continue to evaluate that process and agree with that. Um, just a little bit about our leadership team, how we met and reviewed the status of our work, and that's why when we were at that, the teachers were like, hey, you know, we have some information, we support presenting that. And I was like, yes, that's, it's on the agenda, we'll ask, and so they're here um to talk about everything that we have to celebrate. And I really think to the leadership team feels good about, you guys can speak to this, but um confident in the work that we're doing is the right work. It's over and over, special development that is coming up, like this is the right work. So, and then I just have a little bit about open house there, so. I don't know if you want them right now or you have tone, yes, okay. So, you guys are up?
Alright, I think I'm just gonna stand here. Alright, so the purpose of this presentation, oh, that's a good idea.
Angela LaBrock, I teach second grade, in the district for, it'll be my fourteenth year.
I'm Trish Prior, I teach kindergarten, this is my thirtieth year.
And I'm Ally Hudson, I teach fourth grade, and this is my second year in the district.
So the purpose of this presentation is to give you a quick overview of our building goals from the previous year. And then we're gonna share out some celebrations of some achievements and give you some idea of what we talked about today as a staff when this same PowerPoint was presented and regarding these goals, and then we kind of have some direction for our future for the next year for some goals too. So we went over the mission statement again, um, just to review it and put it back into our heads since it's been since the summer. And I know you guys do that at every meeting as well. I went to a training this summer and one of the presenters there said, not only should you know your school mission statement, but each of us should have one in our own classrooms about what do you want parents to know about what's happening in this room, what are your goals, what's your mission with your kids? So that was something that was shown somewhat important, so it kind of resonated with what we've been doing. We also reviewed the vision statement for our building or for our district, and again, that same training. That instructor said, not only should you have it for the district and for a building, but you should actually have it for your own classroom. So I brought that up to the staff today because we all have PowerPoints that we're presenting at open house. And that was a perfect way, the instructor said it was a perfect way to get that your own mission out and your own vision. So it kind of has a nice tie going. Another thing that we went over is, in our building, we have what we call collective commitments. And these are the ones that were actually developed several years ago and we've refined them as the years have gone by. And this last year, Becky even and the EL team talked about bolding some of the really important words that come out. And we even bolded another one today. So if you just kind of quickly read through those, uh, we all felt that they still hold true, they're still important, they have value. So we didn't change anything except for bolding one more word. Go ahead. And for the main event, this is what we're super excited for. Oh, is our celebration.
So this is our literacy data, looking at Panorama. So, it will come up. If you can't read this, this is all students in ESAC. Um, so in two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, we were at fifty-five percent. And then if you look at two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, we went up to sixty-five percent. Then this is, again, ESAC, this is Prairie Lakes, Prairie Lakes went fifty-nine percent to fifty-seven percent. And then this is the state of Iowa, went from sixty-six percent to sixty-five percent. So what we did is, we kind of did, what do you notice for the staff? So what is something you guys notice?
Yep, so that went up ten percent?
It went out the average, even though the average went down.
So the state of Iowa, we're right, what's state of Iowa? So you did say state of Iowa went down one percent, where we went up ten percent. Prairie Lakes, the other schools in our Prairie Lakes, they went down fifty-nine, fifty-seven, so they went down and they are underneath. Okay. The next slide is basically, we just wrote down some of the stuff that the staff knows, so they basically said about what you guys noticed. So then these are this, our IEP kids from kindergarten to third, we have to report on this as well. So again, this is ESAC all, and then this is were they proficient or not? So we have twenty-three percent were proficient in two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, and we have thirty percent in two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. So we went up by seven percent with our IEP kids too. So we saw improvement across the board. And this next section is our math screening data. So again, we're looking at that healthy indicator number three, which is the percentage of kids needing that SMART. Um, last year, ESAC set at sixty-two percent, mean sixty-nine percent, up to seventy-one percent this year, which if you notice is above the ADA and above its state. So that was a celebration as well. That's different, no, it's from our meeting. Um, the next one that we're looking at here is the conditions for learning survey. Uh, so these, this is, we went down a couple points here. But we have our big increases here. We had the greatest increase in adult-to-student relationships. Um, and then we did have a slight drop in student-to-student relationships. Um, but we'll get more into this on a second. Hold on, do you guys know what the conditions for learning is? Conditions for learning is like relationships in the school. So do you feel safe with an adult? So the students are reporting on how they feel? So in their conditions for learning survey, they are given a bunch of questions, and they have to actually rate favorable in each of those areas. So let's say out of the eight questions, one of them is not favorable, that would bring our score down. Um, so that is a huge celebration for us to have eighty percent of kids reporting favorable about the student relationship. And this is only given third through six in our building. Right. Um, these are the changes over time. So you can see last year, we were down to sixty-eight percent, so twelve percent increase there this year. Um, one of the biggest celebrations we have is our third grade team last year, um, they actually set a goal for their um individual career development plan about increasing um their adult-to-student relationships, and they saw a lot of success. They had been in contact with parents, they had been sending three or more positive, we call them reader recognition, home with those kids, teach catering to three or more, um, out of the whole class. So we saw this huge jump here. Um, so when you're looking at this, it isn't necessarily comparing apples to apples with kids to kids. So like last year's third grade class would be this year's fourth grade class. You can look at the growth for teachers in that grade level. And you can also see the growth for how kids felt about adults to school if you look diagonally down. So that was some pretty good data.
Can you put back, just like, I have a question on this, this great one. If those scores seem a lot lower, was there any insight in comparison between the other grades in the sixth grade? In your discussion this period?
Um, not, nothing other than just owning that data and saying, so, and I thought PD or third grade teacher did a really good job of doing what we noticed last year that, and it was so something we really wanted to focus on, and here's intentionally what we did. And so really just saying like, this isn't what we want to be and make. So also modeling, this is what a PLC does. It's not about shaming anybody about this is your data, so this is all of our students, this is the data, and now we ask, how should I do that? Cause then, what are those small things that you're doing that we meant? So we as a team focus more than our profit tables, what's a small thing you can do to impact this data, cause we're gonna book that in there. Cause this isn't, there are scores up here that we don't, that we, we cannot make.
So then the PD, after third grade shared out the things that they did, the rest of us discussed, what are some things that maybe we can do? I was not sitting with fifth and sixth, but a lot of us all agreed that we could do a little bit more contact calls, phone calls, emails, the notes home, maybe send a, a letter home in the mail, you know, kid in one mail. But all of us could increase by doing something positive like the third grade did.
More than what we're currently doing. I think one thing that stuck out to me was the teacher recording, you know, they had one negative email from a parent at, in the third grade level. And that was way different than the, the year when they had sixty-one percent. And so just how important the upfront positive communication and to have that. We talk about it every year as administrators, like, hey, pick that out early. But it's just one of those things, there's so much to do. And so some things just, you know what I mean, as we, but just to see this kind of that intentional, like this is important and we're doing intentions and we're looking at how that would happen, so.
Good question.
I'm gonna switch to ISAS, what used to be called Iowa assessments, for the data. And again, you have twenty-two, twenty-three compared to twenty-three, twenty-four. And again, you can go across, so it'd be grade level to grade level, not students to students. If you want to go students to students, go diagonal again. So this is, and I'm just gonna use third grade since it's on top here. This is something that they came up and they said, yep, we're not happy with this. You know, so they're already thinking. Hey, how do we go from here and we went down, so what can we do? Cause they, they know if they put in the time and they have a plan, it shows from the other data, that they can make a difference. So when you go this direction, something we talked about as a staff was, we really were intentional this year as a building. I don't even give ISAS, but I was expected to do everything that a teacher that does give ISAS, I, assis, ISAS. I was expected to do the exact same thing, from talking to my students about walking in the hall because there's kids testing. We're walking by rooms and they are studying hard, they're, they're taking a really important test. To dress, we were all expected to dress up more than just our casual, casual dress that we usually have. So some things in the prep, there was much more prep and it was intentional prep. So it was much more intense, but as we can see today, we talked about, it paid off. So now we're already talking about, okay, we can replicate that like what we did last year. Now how do we take it one step further to raise those scores even more? So we're pretty pumped about this, it's a celebration. Uh, we're seeing some improvement, and it's because of our attitudes, our approach. It's that one small thing, a couple small things that we did, but it definitely made a difference, and so it's kind of got us pumped up. Here's the same kind of data, but this time it's in percent from math, again, comparing the two years for ISAS. I'm just gonna give you a few minutes to look at that. So again, we're pretty pumped. If you just look at the grade levels in our building, if you go across, we're seeing improvement again. Some pretty significant gains. And Heather, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but when we were talking about this, Lisa, who, Lisa Keys, who also worked for the ADA last year, said, to have, or like we had a ten percent gain in one of the graphs, that is huge. Ten percent doesn't sound like a whole lot, but when you're talking statistically like this, that is a huge gain. So we were super excited with when we had ten or more, even a nine percent gain. And if you look at that, we had some very significant gains. And here's our science data. Again, we only have one that we're in our building, but again, we felt that it was really the approach that we took last year, the professionalism about it, the confidence. Um, building that confidence in the students, the prep, in the whole entire building, not just in those grade levels.
So like some that they came out with practice tests that second graders can take. So uh, in second grade, we took those practice tests and we pretended it was ISAT does, uh, ISAT state for us too. So maybe when they get to third grade, now that they've kind of seen it and practiced it, maybe that will help them. So it's something new. Um, one of our building goals was to, with, for behavior, was for our, to have eighty percent of our students to have zero to one referral. Do you guys know what referrals are? Okay. So, um, the blue is two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, and red is two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. So we did meet our goal, we had eighty percent that were zero to one. And then if you look down here, this is if they had two or more referrals. Um, in two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, we had twenty-nine percent, and in twenty-three, twenty-four, we had twenty percent, and that's minor or major. So it's not just one or the other.
Something I want to quickly add about referrals is, we've really taken the approach, it's not a consequence, it is just a data collection tool. And that, we feel very strongly about that with the staff. I think that all of us have that belief now that when we have a student that's in trouble or having a problem, we whip a referral out. It's not like that anymore. It's strictly a data piece.
The referral's not the consequence, the referral is just for us.
Right, and that's just for us to see, are we improving with our skills, are we handling situations, are the students learning?
So whatever we're doing, universal is helping those students. And then, um, going back to that conditions for learning that Ally had talked about, we noticed that something that we need to grow in is actually the student-to-student relationships that has actually gone down. And so we are, uh, we came up with staff and came up with some ideas and just kind of listed, what are some things that we can do? Um, that'd be like little small changes to help that peer-to-peer relationship. Now that we've gotten adult-student relationship going up, how can we do that? So one of our things is, our theme this year is be a difference maker. We had a, um, a speaker came in, I'm gonna not remember his name, but. Joe Beckman, and he was talking about be a difference maker. If you see, he was talking about his son was being made fun of on the ground. And a kid did come up and like, don't make fun of him. He just said, hey, you wanna go throw the football over here? And he got up, didn't make a scene, just went and did it. And he was like, that kid was a difference maker for my son. And so that is what we're gonna try and do, is help the kids see, um, that they can be a difference maker for each other. Oh, it's still me. So these were our building goals that we talked about for two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. And so this was like the academic, is that we want to refine the PLC process, we want to be model PLCs. And that's that Minnesota training that we went to for a couple days, we learned some more about that. So when we get with teams, there's four questions that we need to answer. What do we want to, are students to learn? How will we know that they learned it? How will we respond when students haven't learned it? And how will we respond when students have already learned it? We've gotten really good at number one and two. But now that we've done the training, we're gonna get really good at number three and four. So if they're not responding, or they have, what are we gonna do? And then, um, so we're gonna be analyzing the student work and data, making adjustments, adjustments to our instruction. And it's a continuous process, it's not something that can just, we're done in December. It'll just keep going. Uh, we've been working on our math SMART goals, and now a lot of people were talking about moving on to getting some improvement in our literacy scores too. So we're gonna work on, we started digging into our standards and that for literacy, so what SMART goals and what can we do to help with that? The second one is the behavior that we talked about with that graph, that eighty percent of our students will have zero to one behavioral referral. And, um, we did have some PD last year on helping our universal supports to meet that goal, and we did meet that goal. So then as a staff, what we did is, they talked in their grade levels about what do we want our goals to be for next year. So in our forefront, model PLCs, that's what are gonna, our big thing. That's as you, your turn.
Oh yeah, so I'm just gonna kind of share what we talked about today as a staff. Um, we talked about maybe focusing and writing more SMART goals in literacy and putting more focus on that area because we've become so good in math. Um, and then we also talked about not so much just the content area, but let's just focus on what we learned at that PLC conference and improve how we're running our PLCs. Like Anne said, we're really great at those first two, what are our kids supposed to learn, and how are we gonna know when they learned it? But those, those second two are really about our response and our instructional strategies and sharing that as a professional learning community. So one teacher can share what's working for them with another teacher to make it more across the board. Um, and then we also talked about that behavioral goal at the bottom. Um, we talked about just improving that student-to-student relationship. So from our staff input, our leadership team can now sit down and really put together some strong SMART goals to move this forward through this year.
I think that kind of rounds out our.
Do you have any questions for us?
Yeah, questions.
I don't know if I'd say it's questions, but I would say a lot of these numbers are very, very impressive from what we were looking at from the prior, the increase for this. I mean, we certainly want to see them going up, but to see them go up in some cases ten, fifteen percentage points is, I don't know, I don't think I was expecting to see those large of jumps. So very, very good job, um, to all of you that put a lot of time for this last year. Um, this is, I think, really good news for the district.
Yes, thank you. I've heard from a lot of kids, um, that they understand and they like want to be part of it. Like, I mean, I can speak for my kids, like they are on board. I mean, just even other kids, listening to them talk about like their test scores. And like, now we understand like different things for when we take these tests, and so I think it's great, huge, I love this.
And then that was another small change that we made was, we just told them the purpose of the test and how it is important. And I think to get their buy-in, and it, obviously it worked, so.
And then with goal setting, I mean, we sat at conferences and we were doing goal setting with parents and students together with the teacher, which was really powerful too.
That's probably completely a great job.
Thank you very much. And, and feel free to come back, I mean, throughout the year. I mean, this is, it's nice to have presentations and receive updates on this, especially that's why we're here, right? It's the education piece, so feel free anytime, you know, work with Becky and make sure you come in and be lucky here for it again.
Thank you. Tony, alright. I'll follow that one, I'm saying a lot of good. So I shared out some things, and one of you this morning even mentioned a big group that we have goals set out by the, by September. Um, with our building leadership team and some meetings that we had had, we looked at a bunch of different data from even conferences. We looked at, um, a little bit of the ISAS and that data, but really just kind of those overall, um, scores, kind of like what they were showing, but just for the, the entire building. Um, and then also looked at what's really a big push with that attendance piece coming from the state and, and from this, you know, from the school. And tried to come up with three goals that we thought kind of met those three areas. So something academic, something like with the relationship piece. Um, and then something with the attendance piece. And, you know, through the, through all of our talking, we were looking at some of our school, scores and thought, a good ISAT score would be the, be eighty percent proficient or better in all areas tested, uh, building wide. I mean, if you looked at some of those ones before, I wish I would have done my own little graphic the way they had, to show you guys here too, but I mean, everything was, um, with the exception of maybe something there in the freshman level, everything was like, you know, seventy to seventy-eight, you know, like in those ranges. And so this would be kind of a jump that you would, um, hope to be able to make. And kind of like they were talking, really the only big changes that we did to, to improve those scores before were how we handled the prep beforehand with taking the practice tests and the intentionality and kind of setting the stage for how important we thought it was with the kids. Um, I, as far as like changes and things that happened in the past, I told some of the teachers, like, there are things that you were doing, they were working. But we've got to find like, what's the next thing that's gonna get us to that eighty percent, which I actually have later in this board report. Um, but that's where we wanted to start. And then, um, a hundred percent of students will receive positive note cards and a follow-up email to their parents. So something we had started last year, um, was a couple times during, well, it ended up being just about one time during the month as I got towards spring. But a couple times during the month, we want to have a positive note card that teachers will sit down and write on our Monday morning meetings towards a student. Uh, anything that they would notice, you know, it could be how they were helping out other kids in the hallway, or the, you know, just anything that they noticed about them that could be something positive. Um, and they would try to write it for different students and then I'd hand them out there at lunch for the kids. Um, and then the second half of that was, we thought maybe as far as the positive communication went, if teachers were to send home to the parents as well and say, you know, like this, they can just take a picture of whatever they wrote on the note card, put it in the email, send it home, because I know most of the kids probably didn't go home saying, hey, look, I got for my teacher, you know. But then, then there'd be like another piece to it that, that parents would be able to see the, the connections that we're trying to make with the students there. And then the last one, you know, if, if chronic absenteeism has been pretty much a big thing for us in our advisors. Um, and then obviously with the counselors and administration, we're trying to do more monitoring and communication with anybody that's gonna be gone. Cause that goes along with what we're looking at with that policy. We want to make sure that we have at least ninety percent of our students who miss less than ten percent of the scheduled school days. And I think, again, a lot of that's gonna come up with our, like our advisor, what, you know, you would call like the homeroom time. Trying to make sure that the teachers are on top of who's been gone, along with the counselors looking at that data too. And then if we're working with parents, hopefully we have a lot less, um, kids that are currently absent. But those are what we had kind of for our building goals. Shared those out with the staff today, and I think, you know, everybody was pretty well on board with like, those are gonna be things that we can do and through all those things that we're trying to do. Um, orientations. In about five to ten minutes, I'm probably gonna get out of here if we're not done, because I have seventh grade orientation tonight. Um, and then we also have our freshman orientation, and we're trying to do something different with that, where it's gonna be during the day. I sent information on that, we're gonna have shuttle buses running, uh, for the kids that can't either drive here or don't want to ride here one way or the other. And we're gonna try to go through their schedules. And the big thought process here is that we're kind of making it more welcoming for those kids. Going from eighth grade to ninth grade where instead of just being in that seven, eight hallway or, you know, not having a very diverse schedule. Now they're gonna be going from, you know, art to industrial tech to English, but you know, it's like their schedule looks a little bit different. And they're gonna run through it and feel a little more comfortable. Um, and we'll talk through some activities and other things that I know Lance and I have been talking about because Lance always has a lot of great ideas to throw in, so we, we looked at that, he's gonna try to talk about all those as well. But, um, my biggest thing that I was trying to do is that the transitional grades had something to make them feel a little more, um, comfortable coming into the building. So like seventh grade coming from the, uh, pre eighth through sixth building. Um, and like I said, here in about five, ten minutes, I'm gonna head out to that one to get ready. Um, and then our new advisor, so like when we were talking about reaching eighty percent, as I said previously, what we had done was just better preparation, more emphasis on it, you know, more intentionality. So one of the other things we're trying to do, um, is to provide interventions for students that maybe were already struggling, that were already struggling on either our math data that we took, which is an assessment kind of like, um, the Iowa assessments, but we could take that a couple times throughout the year. Um, and their ISAS testing. And so we're actually looking at data starting tomorrow, of some of those students from last year. Um, and start to plan out what we can do during our advisor time. Uh, I think I listed it in there too. So when we find those students that kind of need the help in math, or science, or English, um, we're gonna have on different days of the week, time where they're gonna go meet with those teachers. And then those teachers advise your kids to go to a different area where they can work on, um, some interventions or some extra skills. And we think this is one of those ways that you can, it's like a second set to, to boost those scores even more than just that intentionality. It's something to help reach those kids that maybe just need a little bit of extra help. Um, okay, so, un- unfortunate. Um, okay, so unfortunately, we were not able to hire a Spanish teacher. So, um, through all the efforts that I tried, I, you know, I tried to reach out to retired, um, Spanish teachers and see if they, you know, can you do a half big? Can you do something, you know, can I get them to do anything if, if they're willing at all? Um, had a little bit of interest, but, but unfortunately I had to look in some different areas. And so I looked into a few companies that provide, like through an online experience. But I didn't really want it to be just, you know, recorded videos and whatever else. I was hoping there'd be some kind of, uh, teacher engagement. So we ended up going with a company after looking at a few of them called Elevate. And, um, now it's only three days a week that they'll have the live instructor, but it's gonna be set up in the classroom right across from the hall from me. Uh, with one of our associates will be in there, so that we have an adult to kinda help the students if they need it right there and to like monitor in the classroom. But, um, during that three days a week, they'll have a, a live instruct, well, instructor online up on the screen that they can actually talk to. Um, versus just watching videos and going through those things. And I hope that that kinda helps keep a little bit of the engagement piece that you would lose from just, like I said, um, going through things that were recorded previously. And, and also the help aspect of it, to have somebody that's there live, um, to go through it. Especially something, you know, where it's a little easier to find a sub maybe for like an English class versus trying to, you know, find something for Spanish where they could actually help with going through it. Um, homecoming is coming up really quick, so I just put some of these things out here. We came up with a plan of the week of what we're gonna actually do. I think I have most of it up there, the things that we're trying to do. Um, but it is gonna be, it's, I think it's the third week of the football season, so it's, it's very, very quick for what we're doing. But the parade and everything else is gonna be on the thirteenth. And I think if that information hasn't been shared out with people as we get to the end of the year, it's gonna be shared out pretty quickly. Something to look forward to right at the beginning of the year as we start. I think student council a little excited, but also like worried about how quick it is. But I think it's gonna be a really good thing there, um, at the beginning. Any questions? Yeah, any questions with any other things then?
Okay, I might have a short report for the time, so that's, that's okay. Um, just to shout out to the elementary, um, all that data. You know, we, we knew that changes could occur and people worked really hard and followed direction and, uh, like Lori mentioned, buy-in from kids. We admire it from families, we admire it from kids. It doesn't happen enough, so. Good stuff. Um, we'll be promoting that a little bit here before school starts as well. Uh, just so the general public knows, all the girls that were there last year. Uh, during our back to school day-to-day with teachers, we, we talked about some of this stuff. We talked about the improvements that we've made, the celebrations. Becky made that comment about professional development. The elementary staff put in a ton of time this summer and that doesn't happen anywhere. I think it shows commitment from our teachers that they want the right things for our kids and that we need a lot, so. Uh, just a few things to note, uh, this month, our new teacher, we had a new teacher day, uh, Thursday last week. Fourteen new teachers in the district. Um, it was good to get to know them. Dale was there and took the picture, got a little information for him, so that can come out on paper. Uh, we've been highlighting them on our Facebook page as well. Um, just a lot of excitement in, um, going into school year. So I think that'll be, that'll be awesome, to be supporting people to join our team. And then with Heather as the new assistant principal and specialized director, um, I'm just really excited about what's gonna happen this year. Saw that growth last year. I know that that growth probably isn't gonna be exponential, but it, it's a testament of, you know, we can grow and we continue to grow, so, um, just excited for what this year's gonna bring. Alright, some other great things to talk about. Playground, the HVAC, the elementary, all those projects are complete. Uh, like with any of the HVAC pro, um, projects, I'm sure there will be problems from time to time and we'll get those figured out. And we're still, um, continuing to work on our new additions in the, in the building as well as part of HVAC. But apparel control's been great to work with whenever there was a problem to show up. Um, so I know the elementary teachers are really excited about that. When we talked about that today, they started clapping. So good to know that they're excited about air conditioning. Uh, the kids haven't seen the playground yet, but it looks sharp. Uh, all the asphalt has been redone. Equipment's in, the rubber's poured, mulch is there. Um, and I think, uh, just, we, we got a lot of people praying for that. Julie, uh, being one of them, and the people that worked on it, um, worked really good. Uh, they worked around pretty much everybody else's timeline to get it done. Um, and, uh, it's just, it'll be awesome for our kids when they see it for the first time. I know I got two little girls that are waiting to go play in the playground, so hopefully they wanna concentrate in school too, so. Um, big shout out to the custodial crew. I'm sure you noticed the hallways we came in, uh, both buildings. Um, they've worked really hard. The elementary, they had the, you know, construction trucks going on and then all come together here until the last couple of weeks. But, uh, we did a little activity this morning with the staff. Um, and I made, uh, each teacher think of somebody who works really hard for our district. And, um, I know Tammy, Tammy's name got mentioned a lot, uh, for those buildings, so. Um, we have some great custodians here and they put in a lot of work and a lot of sweat and effort, so. Um, the buildings are not new, we know that, but for an older building, they look, they look pretty good, so. Uh, probably the thing that has consumed a lot of time in the last couple of weeks, um, with Tyler and Brian and myself. Um, this was a project where we started at the beginning of the, beginning of summer just to look at our bus routes. Um, had a few parents contact us late last year and said, you know, our kids are spending a lot of time on the bus. And one thing I went to Brian with, I said, well, we just need a system to make sure our routes are equitable and fair for our families. In that, we learned a lot. So, uh, we have a very large district and I, I think everybody knows that. Um, we have six routes that serve our district. With that, we, uh, started from, we just cleared the slate. We, through registration, we got addresses, um, of people who needed, uh, rural pickup. And then Tyler worked extensively on putting them on a map in our district and did some stuff with Google Maps and I don't know what else he used. Um, but was able to generate some efficient routes for us, the most efficient routes possible. What we soon realized, as I was expecting, big changes, shaving lots of time off. And our old routes were pretty efficient, as it turns out. Uh, we were able to improve several, you know, almost every route a little bit. Um, but, uh, we learned that, you know, uh, with our size, there was gonna be no magic button that we could just pick everybody up, start a consent. It wasn't gonna be possible. Uh, so we did what we could. Um, and in that, we wanna make sure we're following this table off the time that kids spend on buses. Uh, and we were able to make some headway and some changes on improving that. The one thing that I think the board needs to know, and we didn't actually know this until, um, we did this. But between last year, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four, and this year, twenty-four, twenty-five, we had fifteen pickups in the country this year alone, going into this school year. So, divide that by the six routes. We were able to shave some time off the routes as well as accommodate fifteen more stops that were not on the routes last year. In the event, you know, we have more people riding the bus or we're able to find more drivers, there always could be conversation whether we add another route. Uh, what you're gonna find is districts are having a very hard time keeping the drivers that they have. Um, so adding a route would be a huge step, but, uh, what I want the board to know and the public to know is that we've tried really hard to improve our routes and make them fair and equitable across the district. There still are some early pickup times, um, but we did the best we could and we looked at it from a, from a new, cleared the slate and, and there was to make it.
What's the earliest that we can pick up from this place?
Uh, we will have some pickups about six forty.
And they usually get dropped off about seven forty, seven fifty, five, seven minutes?
So our, our bus, our buses at Lakeview and Sac City for the shuttle leave at seven fifty. So, um, some of those kids that have those early routes though are not, they, they, they took that into account, they're not on that shuttle. So it's not gonna, so they'll, they'll go, they get picked up early and then they get to their tenant center as early as they can. And they don't have to ride the tenant shuttle in between buildings. Um, so that was, we did the best we could with what we have right now. Uh, and, um, I hope the parents and, and the community understand that we have a very large district. And, uh, we're thankful for that. We're thankful for the kids. It's just finding what works. The one thing we were able to do too on some of those early pickups, that we were able to explain, I often call those parents, that if this time is too early and you're, and you're able and willing, if you get into Wall Lake by this time, they can hop on there. If you get into Lakeview at this time, they can hop on there. So I understand that, you know, sometimes parents and kids are like, that's, that's early. We can't do that, but keep in mind the route, you're going everywhere instead of a one-way direction to a town. So if that is too early, then at least they have the option to hit a pickup point in Wall Lake, Lakeview, Sac City, stuff like that, so. Uh, we also dared us to accommodate, uh, the change of the law, that buses can go two miles in the surrounding districts to pick up kids. We do have some open road kids in that, uh, saw transportation, we did our best to accommodate that the best we could. Um, there are some where the parents are gonna drive them to the district line, uh, just to make our route as efficient as we can, and they've all agreed to do that, so. Trying to accommodate and it's, you know, it's a tough situation, but I think very thankful for Tyler and Brian and our drivers. Our drivers put a lot of time into this too. Um, I know Mike, Mike has called parents several times throughout his route to try to figure out how we can best do it, so. A lot of work from a lot of people. Uh, the last thing I'm gonna talk about, and, and Tony didn't have this on his board report, we just found this out the other day. So that conference I attended in Nashville in July, I spoke to somebody there about a, uh, a high, it's a, it's high school assembly that, that give away. Um, it's paid for by grants through, through the state of Iowa. Well, she noticed I was from Iowa and she goes, hey, we have one more date in Iowa coming up in September. And it's called Choices Matter. It's a program. Um, the interesting thing is the week that they are in Iowa, it was homecoming week. So we're gonna take a very busy week and throw an assembly into that as well. So on September eleventh, all of our high school students are gonna be part of this Choices Matters, uh, um, assembly. And it talks, it talks about just choices that like some high school kids make that aren't, aren't great. So, um, whether it's distracted driving or drinking and driving, uh, we're gonna have an assembly, uh, that talks about that. The normal cost on that is about five thousand dollars, but like I said, this is a grant. Um, and it's paid for by the Iowa Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau. So, uh, in essence, we're lucky enough to get a free assembly to talk about choices and positive choices we want to give to them, so. That is what I have for this one.
Nothing left.
There's a lot to handle.
Any questions? Alright, then we'll move on. It does not appear to make any discussion items, so we'll move on to action items. Uh, first up, are the consent agenda items?
Two things I wanna highlight on the board policies, just the updates, just so everybody knows. Um, and I don't know if Becky's gonna talk about this, maybe you can handle it. Um, two of the board policies that are being updated deal with attendance and truancy. Um, so last year during the legislative session, uh, legislators might have made a point where school districts are held accountable to enforce truancy laws, um, from chronic absentee. So the law and the policy is kind of a, it's kind of a two-fold thing. It specifically states that districts are supposed to be, if the student becomes criminally absent. Uh, the state defined, defines that at missing ten percent of the school days. So a ten percent of the school days, we're required to be sent away home to let parents know that they hit that threshold. Um, and then also let them know that if their attendance is worse, the next step is at fifteen percent, uh, we have to have to do that thing. And then at twenty percent, uh, we are at two percent charges to the county attorney office. The legislation in this, uh, I believe the, uh, goal is just to kind of hold school districts a little more, well, I think the goal is whole families accountable. That's the goal. But with that, they gave school districts a little more teeth on what we can do as far as kids being absent. And then put some pressure on the county attorneys as well, saying, if kids aren't going to school, we want prosecuted, so.
Are you aware of that?
Very much aware of that, yeah. We've had a few meetings together, uh, spoken with our county attorney, who's very much in favor of doing this. The biggest thing, uh, most county attorneys would say is, I am okay pursuing this, but I don't want anyone caught off guard. Uh, with this new process, there's no way anyone can get caught off guard with your kids going to be truant or basically violating the law, so. I think it's good, one thing the state saw, I went to a meeting on this, is, um, the state average absenteeism in schools used to be around ninety percent. After COVID, that skyrocketed, we were from seventeen to twenty-seven percent. And I don't think there's a set reason for that other than certain families, kids, parents, whoever, just didn't send their kids to school as much as they would have passed, so. Um, our legislators worked at that and, and said, if you can't get kids to school twenty for, you know, more than seventy-five percent of the time, however, we expect people to work more than sixty-five percent of the time, so. Uh, there's a, there's a, a good goal behind all of this, but you'll notice in the handbooks that a lot of time was spent on developing the system to, uh, adapt to that, so.
How many students do you, roughly, did we have last year that would hit that fifty percent threshold?
Off the top of my head, I would say probably ten percent would hit probably fifteen percent threshold. But in the second data, I don't know about the elementary.
We, we have a plan that too.
I know, a lot of people forgot about it last year, they were like, oh.
So we, we started, and we started last year as we just, we knew this was coming and so we were like trying some things out and just making people aware that they missed this much, you know? But there's even some tweaks to that that we, we worked out. So it's more of a presenting person, kind of a thing, for example. Um, so we're also trying to be proactive with it too and, and that's, um, like interventions with kids. We noticed, you know, just checking in with somebody at school, um, they're having that meeting with a parent, like here's the thing, they need to be at school. And then their attention, uh, improved a lot, so we, we stopped the whole issue.
Well, and then it makes them be, it's kind of, um, there's no, it's just, um, you know, if you're left in the home all the time, that's, it's, it's, you're gone, you're, like, it's not worth it.
So what happens if you have a student that has a pretty serious medical need and has to have physical therapy or has to have things like that? How do you, how is that going?
There, there are four exceptions that the state put in Iowa code, um, which is probably like one of the most significant. There's, there's four exceptions on basically, uh, how a student would be excused from the truancy policy. Uh, if they, um, can't be at school and severe illness is one of them. It, it does have to have doctors and stuff like that. So I think the biggest thing that I, I want our community and parents to know, this isn't a punitive thing. This is, we all know kids learn better if they show up to school. So, um, yes, there will be some parents that will receive a letter and be shocked, like, why did I get a letter? Like Lori mentioned, that happened last year sometimes, but dad is dad, but your student's not in school, that's why you get a letter, so, um.
But I think for some of the parents, I don't think they realize that it's just all. But I think for some of the parents, I don't think they realize that if he's not, they're like, you know, what are they doing with that? You know, it's a kind of, um, that I talked to, I think there was that much school.
So what did the county attorney say, his policy? When he sent the letter first before he would have pursued criminal?
I actually don't, uh, when it hits that twenty percent, uh, we've kind of done our part. It said, I think the law is written, the county attorney may act. I believe he has, they, the, who are the county attorneys, they have, they have some ability to decide whether or not they will file charges on parents. So that, that's how the law is written, is the county attorney may act, but I believe the legislation as a state wants them to act, so. We'll see how it goes. I mean, I, I just, I think it's a, it's a good thing for our kids in learning. And you're gonna have the parents that leave for a week and take their kids on vacation. Uh, and as long as they don't do that in the first couple of months of school, it's not gonna be a problem. But, you know, you hit your percentage based on days absent versus days attended, so. If somebody takes a week on vacation the second week of September, they're going to get a letter. They might not, you know, they might be great parents, and they might be a, a great family, but they will get a letter if you take a week on vacation the second week of September, that's just how it works, so. Uh, the other thing, as far as board policies go, uh, seven ten point four deals with negative lunch account balances. Worked with our food service department on this, said the, the policy had not been updated in a while, and the threshold used to be thirty dollars that if, if the account wasn't, um, if the account went more than thirty dollars negative, uh, there would be contact, and we would have to figure out a way to get the account positive. We changed that threshold from thirty dollars to fifty dollars. We're recommending that change. But one thing Lori wanted the board to know, and our public to know, is, you know, we plan on enforcing that board policy. So there's bunch of counts that run, you know, past fifty dollars negative, you will get contacted by the school, and you will be asked to pay your account, uh, and get a credit, so.
Any other questions on any consent agenda items? Motion. Second. Motion in a second to approve the consent agenda items. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up, student handbook.
All right, uh, the handbook's up for approval, are the preschool handbook, the K six handbook, and the seven twelve handbook, as far as student handbooks go. I believe we, through the principal reports and board policy, we have kind of covered the major changes to those. The major changes deal with attendance and the truancy policy, and the board has been supplied with a draft to make sure, so.
Are there any, all of questions on student handbooks?
I'll move you up for the student handbook.
I'll second.
Motion in a second to approve the student handbooks. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Employee handbook.
Uh, the board has received a draft for the twenty-four, twenty-five employee handbook. All the administration and Tyler met this summer to discuss changes and updates to that. Some of those changes were discussed, uh, as pending today at the staff meeting, the possible approval tonight. And if it was approved, we look at that, out to staff and get a first.
Any concerns from the staff?
Not that I heard.
Do you have some highlights? What changes were?
On the staff handbook?
Yeah.
Sure, if you find out what I want from this morning, you can bring me that up. Yep.
Vacation time, or time off or something?
No, a lot of it, um. So some of the stuff was negotiated, negotiations last year. One of the things that we're working on with, um, our activity accounts was, uh, we, we talked and talked about, uh, a number of events. Certified staff must work. Their, uh. There you go. All right, so, um, certified staff is gonna work three events. And that can be anything from taking tickets to helping park cars to learning the square board. Uh, and we will work five events to earn a family pass, which is a hundred and seventy-five dollar value. We reminded staff that they need to turn in, uh, their mileage reports on mon- monthly, that was already in there, but we did have a few people who did not do that last year. Formal evaluations, a, a small changes could be made there. There used to be three formal evaluations for probationary teachers, we did reduce that number down to two. That's, that means state law, state law is written at two. Uh, but we also said that one of those evaluations, outside of the two, there probably will be a third evaluation done by their assistant principal. So more than likely probationary teachers will be evaluated three times a year, two by their principal, one once by Heather. We updated the district evaluation forms to kind of more closely match what the state wants done for teacher evaluations. People, parents will notice that the school day is a little bit shorter than it was last, ten minutes shorter than last year. Uh, we're gonna dismiss from at three fifteens to three twenty-five. Part of that was uh, there had been a longstanding tradition of a thirty-minute lunch period here at the high school. Discussions with several people just decided that that was too long. So we reduced the lunch period, uh, from thirty minutes to twenty-five minutes, and that's kind of what it got on school earlier than we had. Conferences, we set conference times, uh, from four to eight, uh, and then talked about some staff meeting stuff that the association wanted, discussed during negotiations, of course, we know staff meetings, and then also, um, a way for some veteran teachers to turn in some sick, sick days, convert ten sick days to one personal day after they acquire a hundred and twenty, so. You guys over here, you know. Other questions about the employee handbook?
Make a motion to approve the employee handbook.
Second. Motion in a second to approve the employee handbook. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, lastly, we've got personnel items.
All right, a lot of contracts offered this month. We generally do these all together, so. You can see up on the board there, our resignation, uh, from Cara Christoffer as an associate, and then contracts offered. Lisa Keys, junior high volleyball, MTS coordinator, literacy coach. Kara Wellington, Sack City concession stand manager, Steph Herbling, Wal Lake, Lakeview concession stand manager. Melissa Stamp, associate, Lexie Turnquist, associate, Marlena Cruz, associate, Lindsay Rosa as an associate. Sammy Bruce as a district sub slash TLC coach, Taylor Bushman as a district substitute, Enfield Hasner as a district substitute.
I'll make a motion, we approve the personnel items section.
Motion in a second to approve the personnel items. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Before adjournment, we talked about future board meeting dates. Uh, the third Monday in September is September sixteenth. Wondering if that date would work for the board. Intendedly, let's plan on holding that meeting up at Sack City, uh, at the elementary. Jackie had a great idea on, uh, kind of doing a unveil of the new playground and give recognition to some of the parents that are going to have their next board meeting, so.
What was the date again?
September sixteenth. Brent, was six ten work if it's at Sack City?
Well, I'd get off at six.
Oh, yeah, six.
So I can make it at fifteen.
All right, so let's plan if the board is okay with it, six fifteen in Sack City on September sixteenth.
And we should also note, um, I believe the board is doing High Five Friday on the twenty-third, which is the start of school.
Yes.
So we should make mention of that. I believe we need to post that technically somewhere, because it's all being there.
The board will be gathering.
We'll be gathering for High Five Friday, so if you could make sure we're covered with that, for me.
When Kelly asked that, I said, the first day of school is very busy, and she said that with five, five board members that she thought it would be a great idea, and I agree. So if you can make it on Friday, um, the first day of school is always a, well, there's sometimes tears. There's sometimes happiness, and generally, kids rest up, so it's kind of a cool day.
Pictures.
On seven forty. Bo will be expecting you.
I know.
We'll give you a phone hand you can wear.
I think that was the only other thing. Any, any other items? All right, other words, any motions to adjourn?
Welcome to adjourn. So move, or second?
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Dale.